Good evening, everybody. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, April the 10th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Invocation this evening is going to be given by Father Richard of St. Basil's Catholic Church. Good evening, Father Richard.
Good evening, honorable members of the council. Let us pause and bring ourselves into the presence of our Creator. God loves His creation, His goodness sustains the universe. Let's pray now that He will bestow His blessings upon us and upon you. He will renew you and support you with His strength. He will increase your gifts to return them to you and to serve us, to our community. He asks Him to watch over you with pally care and help you to truly continue to lead our city. Blessed are you, O God, Creator of the universe, who have made all things good and given the earth for us to cultivate. Grant me all your use, created things gratefully, and share your gift with all who we serve. Out of love for you, who live and reign forever and ever, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Richard. And now, if you're willing and able, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its人民的人民的旗帜, one nation, under the sky, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Megan.
Chef Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Takes us to the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know it's approved. Consent agenda, items A through E.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda, items A through E.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Takes us to new business. City Council is going to be asked to consider the approval of special event, application 2023-17, which is the Battle for the Beach 2023, to be held on July the 22nd and the 23rd, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. at the North Beach Volleyball Courts.
Make a motion to approve special event application 2023-17, Battle for the Beach 2023, to be held on July 22nd and 23rd, 2023, from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. on the North Beach Volleyball Courts.
Second.
Got a motion, we've got a second? Kate, I think we have some volleyballers out there ready to come and talk too.
We do have some volleyballers out there. So this would be a new beach volleyball tournament with all proceeds going to the South Haven Varsity Volleyball Program. The tournament would be two divisions. First division would be women's, open to ages. Second division for women under 18. This would be Saturday, July 22nd, and then continuing on to Jan- I'm sorry, July 23rd for bracket play. As I said, this is a new event. We do have our established volleyball courts on the North Beach. This seemed like a good fit. And here is Coach Wendy Spencer to talk a little bit more about this. If council has any questions, please let her know.
Hello, council members. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Wendy Spencer. I'm the new varsity volleyball coach here in South Haven. And I think it's just a travesty that we don't really use the beaches as much as we do. I think they know they make better athletes. And I think at this point also, we're considering doing a co-ed, also not just only for women, just to open it up to anyone who wants to come to our community and play volleyball. Again, I've asked for those hours, just in case we get a lot of applications. I mean, we might be done in one day, but the plan is to do a two-day tournament and bring people to come and watch and play volleyball of all ages. Do you have any questions for me?
I think it sounds like fun.
Oh, good. I mean, the plan is also for this to be an annual event, to keep this coming every year and to kind of make it a tradition for people to start coming back to South Haven to play volleyball regularly.
I agree. It's nice to get people out, stay active. You made the motion. I mean, you're going to be there, you're going to sign up?
Yeah. Who am I going to see up there?
It's women's this time.
Oh, well.
It's women's this time, yeah.
Eventually.
Cheer.
Very good.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No other questions, very good. Thanks for putting it together. All right, any public questions or comments? All right, seeing none. We've got a motion, we've got a second to approve special event application 2023-17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, it is approved. Thanks for coming. Our next city council is going to be asked to authorize the hiring of a new part-time position to help with the short-term rental program.
Do we need a motion?
Yep.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to authorize the staff to hire a new part-time position to help with short-term rental, the short-term rental program.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Who's up?
Go ahead, Griffin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you. For a little bit of background, when the short-term rental program was originally established, it was contemplated that there would be two employees needed to staff it for the last approximately two and a half years, really since the pandemic. It's operated with one. During this time, the number of permitted short-term rentals have increased notably. And to keep up with the workload, the building department is requesting the hiring of a new part-time position to help with the short-term rental program. To support this request, a review of the finances was conducted to determine that a rate increase would not be necessary to cover the costs of the new part-time position. You can see in the staff report, a summary of the actual budget for 2018, 19, 1920, 2021, 2021, 2022, and then an updated projection through the end of this fiscal year, showing that over the five years of this program, it has netted just over $75,000. So we would have funding available to cover the estimated costs of this new position. I'm happy to do my best to answer any questions.
For the budget discussions coming up, for the 2023-2024 budget, will this then be reflected in that upcoming budget?
If it's approved this evening, my understanding is it'll be reflected.
Any other questions?
It says it costs less than $6,000?
That's for the remainder of this fiscal year. So if approved today, my hope would we would get the position posted by the end of the week. It'll likely take a couple of weeks to fill, a couple of weeks to get someone brought in. You know, by the time it's probably mid-May, we're only looking at really a month to a month and a half of wages for the rest of this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions? I mean, if not, we could, any public questions or comments? Just want to come up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. So based on the comments just now, it sounds like it's part-time and seasonal. So it will, if it, I appreciate clarification of whether it's year-round or just in the summer. Also, I'd sent an email to city council on Saturday, and I had requested at a minimum that a job description and the hourly pay be provided to you for the vote for this, because once it's voted, it's a done deal and clarification is moot. It sounds like a job description could be posted by week's end if it's approved. So why is the job description not presented to you so that we know exactly what is expected of this employee? I also remind you that in December 2022, there was a vote to get updated software at the cost of $29,330 and change, because the building department is requesting additional capacity via software services to assist with the management of the short-term rental program. And so for the budgets that been, that has been provided in the packet, is all of this currently reflected so that it is covered by the fees for the short-term rentals? And also, what about the deficit that is trying to be resolved by the increased fee that was implemented last year? What's the status of that budget deficit being paid back? And most importantly, and I know many people have asked this, and you know, every time that the city attorney is involved with short-term rental matters and things like that, does that attorney fee go to short-term rentals? Or is that put towards the general budget? Because it seems like if it's related to short-term rentals, it should go to short-term rentals and not to the general legal budget, such that the short-term rental program is being funded by itself. Now, I'm not opposed, I'm not raising this to say I'm against short-term rentals, for short-term rentals. I've used short-term rentals before I moved here. It's just, I would like a transparent budget of everything. What is the actual cost? And what are the ancillary costs that contribute to the budget? And ensure that they're being apportioned as we are told they're apportioned, and they're not being diverted inappropriately to our general budget. If it's not addressed tonight, I certainly hope it's addressed in the general budget discussion, because it's time that we understand what's being funded for what. And again, it would be nice to know what the job description is, because I think a lot of staff's time is coming up with answers to the same questions, but the answers are not sufficient. And as I indicated in my email, this may be premature without the, yes, I do have more than two minutes, before the workshop is held on April 20th, because there's a lot of issues going on, and there's a lot of unresolved issues. And we've been waiting for clarity about terminology, because it appears that everybody has different opinions. And it would be nice to have everybody moving in the same direction and interpreting the same words, the same ways. But at this point in time, we appear to be going in many directions, wasting much time. And is it really necessary at this point in time, in light of the software that we bought? Again, hopefully, things can be resolved at the workshop. I'm not, I'll, and time will tell. But at the very least, it would be nice to have an understanding of, is, when they say part-time, is it part-time year-round, part-time seasonal? And what's the hourly weight, hourly rate, hourly rate? There we go. It's been a long day. And a job description, so we know exactly what to expect from this person to know what issues are going to be resolved by hiring. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else? Good evening.
Hi, David Beanstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And I do agree with many of the points that Mary made, and also would be interested in answers to those questions. So I'll reserve plenty of time, it won't take long up here, regarding the part-time position. If it will truly help to address some of the citizens' concerns, I think it would be good. It just, from my observation, which isn't complete, it just seems like time after time, the citizens' concerns are, take a backseat to the concerns of STR owners. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Was there anybody else? All right, seeing, I know, I mean, and on your last point, that's part of the reason this position is being created, to make sure we are addressing those concerns. Any just quick comment? We've got the grant, the grant of software, that's.
There's a, there's a lot of questions built in there, so I'll do the best I can to try to respond to many of them. You know, first off, wages for the position, we're looking between $20 and $25 an hour, depending on qualifications. It is a part-time position, so there are no benefits associated with that. We are looking at year-round, part-time, but some of those items are at the discretion of the city manager per the city charter, which is why they're not included in here. Job description is going to be exactly the same as the full-time short-term rental coordinator we currently employ. So again, it's not a new job description. So again, didn't feel that was necessary to bring before you all. I think there's also a little bit of confusion. The additional software that was authorized towards the end of last year was not $29,000. That was the total amount for all of the short-term rental grant of his software we now use. So the existing modules plus the new modules, the modules that were added towards the last year were closer to $13,000. And to answer the question, yes, all of, all of those new costs are being built into these projections, and it'll be built into the budget that'll get brought before you all in the future. How about I stop there for now to just go, I think this is necessary to address the workload that's being asked of the department. I know that some of the folks here this evening are those who bring a lot of questions to our department, and if we want any chance to keep up with that and to keep the registrations and inspections going, as is expected by all of you, I do believe this position is necessary.
And it's going to be paid for out of the rental program, so I am supportive of the position. Are there any other questions or comments? And if not?
Anybody from the audience yet?
Yeah. At one of our sessions, we talked about a couple of administrators in the office being inundated with questions from residents and not having the time to answer them or taking away from the rest of their job responsibilities. So my question would be, this part-timer hopefully will help alleviate some of the over workload for some of the other staff. The second part, or main reason for the question, is will the residents be able to call this part-time person and ask them directly or write to them directly with questions? Will they have the responsibility and the access to answers to questions? And I know that's a tough question, because you don't get the questions.
Sure. The short answer is it's going to depend. I mean, like any of our staff, we try to keep them accessible, but depending on the question and depending what these people are working on, it's going to depend. I do know there have been some conversations about, you know, workload, and part of the software that is being onboarded in the upcoming months is to give people a 24/7 hotline to report their immediate questions and concerns to. They'll then be tracked, triaged, and followed up by the staff. So again, will these folks be accessible? Yes, but I can't always guarantee they're going to be able to answer the question or solve that problem in the moment. There's just too many different things it could be.
And moreover, as a part-time position, it's not going to have like, I don't know what days that person would work or if they're going to be in the office every day for a number of hours. So it's kind of hard to say right now. But the idea is having this part-time person is to, one, help alleviate some of the, just the volume that's coming in, as well as code enforcement, which I think is something that council and the public has been asking for.
Yeah, and I think that's great. I just think they should be accessible from residents, assuming the questions, because they can be tough questions. They shouldn't be responsible for all answers to all types of questions. But basic questions, it'd be nice to have a person, they can pick up the phone and call.
For basic, for basic questions about the program, that is what their job is. I can tell you that a lot of the questions we get about the program are not basic questions, and they are very fact-intensive, and those are not easily answerable by the administrator, or excuse me, by the administrative positions we have and would be looked to be filling in those roles. That's when our zoning administrator, myself and the city manager, have to get involved in trying to answer questions.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else?
I was just going to say, my understanding, after talking to Kate about it earlier, is that it could help potentially improve quality of life issues for residents through things like enforcement and resolving issues. So to me, I think it's a good step forward.
It's the goal, yes.
Okay, anything else? Nothing. We've got a motion, we've got a second to authorize the hire of the new part-time position. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, it's approved. Thanks, everybody. Next, citizens of the audience who've heard on items not on the agenda. If you'd like to come up and speak, you have up to five minutes. Just state your name and address. Going once, going twice, just made it. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Mike Campbell, 216 Erie Street. I know from the calendar that there is an STR workshop that's scheduled for, I think, next week, on the 20th.
20th.
There isn't much information out there about the workshop and so forth. I know that it was something that had been requested in order to discuss the issues around the STR program. I was just going to ask if there could be some additional clarification at this meeting, using the rest of my time on such things as, is there a plan for what, how the workshop is going to be run? Will public be able to be able to speak? And will they have like a five-minute period of time to speak? Just some additional details so that residents know what to expect of this particular workshop.
I know you were going to do that during your count. Do I do it now or wait to have comments? Either, just maybe do it now, because she hadn't mentioned it later, but thank you for the question.
So we have set aside time at the integrated learning center at the high school for September, I'm sorry, September, April 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We are looking at a number of presentations. I've reached out to two groups specifically to have them come in. I'm also working with facilitator, Mark DeRue, will be coming in to assist us with this, as this is a topic that have very strong opinions on either side. So we're, we've been working with him and kind of helping him guide this process. That's part of the reason why we won't be in this room, but we'll be in another room. The first meeting, the workshop on April 20th, is meant to be an informational session, just to get us all on the same page, making sure that as we're going forward, we all have a common understanding about a number of topics. I've invited the NNN group, I've invited the South Haven Vacation Rent Alliance to also speak. I'll be following up with details with those two groups, but it is on our calendar. The agenda should be posted tomorrow. And the public is allowed to comment, although the comment period may be ratcheted down just for the volume of number of people that we expect there. And we don't want this to go till midnight. So there will be some, it won't be like a city council meeting with the five minutes and things like that. It'll just, it'll be a tailored workshop and getting a lot of information.
Perfect, thank you. All right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one of the things I have found that's inherent in being a city council person, that's always been frustrating, but it's just the nature of the beast, is trying to have a two-way conversation with residents when they get up and speak. So at this workshop, I envision workshops as just that, where people can speak and you can exchange ideas, especially on an issue this is difficult. So will city council, if someone gets up and speaks, especially the two groups, can we ask the speaker questions directly?
I think that we're trying to hold questions to the end. Otherwise, we may not get through the number of presentations we're going to be having, but there will be a question period.
Okay. Anybody else, public questions, comments? So just come on up.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Couple follow-up questions. So will it be taped? And will the presentations include clear definitions of terms that have been at issue, having differing opinions about what they meant? So, speaking of which, I would like to speak of the recodification process, something I've spoken of previously, and I provided slides trying to make it more apparent why tract changes are quite critical in this process. Two examples. First is the section 1722 with regard to porches, stairways, and decks. In the new one, it's 2107 with projections into yards. In the old version, it limited, it provided extension of the uncovered porch, et cetera. But it should not, it shall not be located closer than three feet to a property line inside or rear yards and may encroach up to six feet into the front yard setback. The new version, that was the old version, the new version actually creates an inconsistency within it because it has stricken the clarification about the side yard and rear yards for the three-yard setback. It now reads that it may project up to six feet into the front yard. A new sentence says, "In no case, however, shall any uncovered or unclosed porch, stairway, deck, or be placed within closer than three feet of a property line." It no longer clarifies rear and side property lines. It says a property line, which means any property line, which means front property line. So in one sentence, you say it can project up to six feet into the front yard setback, and front yard setbacks for R1A and R1B are 15 and 25. So it, but in the second sentence, it says it can be within three feet of a property line. So here, you're allowing the projection to be longer than six feet if you're allowing it in the front yard of an R1A or R1B to be within three feet of the property line. There's an inconsistency because of that redaction striking of the rear and side yards from the original. Hence, I really strongly encourage the city council to request that tract changes for these very important pieces, sections, be provided. The other example is with regard to the unclassified uses. So the original unclassified use said that required the ZBA to be involved. It said, "The zoning administrator shall repair, prepare a report to the zoning board of appeals. The planning commission is involved." But the ZBA is asked to consider to use the variance according to Section 2206 of the ordinance, which requires a hearing, et cetera. The new version has completely removed ZBA review. The new version allows the zoning administrator to request a determination by the planning commission, and that is it. In light of the recent ZBA reversal of the zoning administrator's grant of a permit and the upholding in circuit court of the ZBA decision to reverse that permit, it shows that the ZBA is a very important section of our community and really should be included more often in light of the legal lawsuit of 77 Clinton and the legal lawsuit in which the ZBA decision was upheld and not less involved. So by removing it from the unclassified use, you have with, you have removed the zoning board of appeal, who is here to interpret our laws, to interpret what should or should not be allowed, and has placed it in the planning commission, which is not appropriate. So I encourage you to please require tract changes, at least for these extremely important sections of our zoning ordinance. Failure to do so shows striking of two simple words has made inconsistencies within that own section. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else?
David Beanstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. Once again, I do agree with Mary's comments. And just to address those two items, it seems to me, again, that both of those items go against what probably most residents would want. So we've removed the ZBA from that review process, number one, and I don't think that's what the residents want. Number two is the setback looking like it may now be able to be reduced from six feet to three feet, although it's a little bit unclear. Again, I don't think that's something that the residents want. So I just see things moving in a bad direction here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think I need to confirm something, or at least clarify something. I hear the concerns that are being brought up here, but I hope everyone understands that nothing has been changed, right? This still has to go to the planning commission for review with a public hearing, and then it needs to come to the city council for a public hearing and then approval, both of which will probably be done in many stages as a complete rewrite or a recodification takes a lot of time. So there would be a lot of time spent on chapters and brought things forward. So this is a very large undertaking, and I hear the concerns being brought, but just understanding, nothing has been changed. These are proposals being looked at by a subcommittee who are making recommendations. But moreover, all of this will have to not only be seen by this board, but by the planning commission with multiple public hearings. So I just want to clarify that for the commission, for this council, as well as the public. I think there's just some misunderstanding going on. So hopefully, everyone understands, nothing has been changed. This is a committee working, and this will be rolled out as we do with other zoning amendments.
And it's quite an undertaking, and there's a long ways to go.
That's right.
Yeah, I agree. Any other comments? And if not, we'll wrap. Okay, let's go on to city manager comments.
Two comments. Well, one, we have our short-term rental workshop on April 20th. The agenda should be posted tomorrow. The agenda should be posted tomorrow. Again, it should, it'll be evolving thing, but as I said, we are working with a facilitator, so I hope to get that out tomorrow. And secondly, I'm sure you've all, maybe saw that we have, we're having a little bit of road construction going on. What I can say is that the Broadway portion should be opened up tomorrow, but we will see significant construction on the business loop till June 20th. So while they're moving out of Broadway starting tomorrow, eventually, MDOT will be moving over there. But the majority of the work that you're going to be seeing is at the Phoenix and, and Blue Star intersection. They're completely redoing that intersection. But take some time and just understand it's all on construction. MDOT is responsible for the signage that we see out there and other things. We are in contact with their engineers, so if something is coming up, please let me know. But we hope to have them out sooner rather than later. But they're telling us June 20th is their day.
Very good. And thanks to you for getting staff to pick up all the, during the one windstorm, we had all those cones, and you know how confusing it was? And then half of them were knocked over, so you were, I confused on a good day figuring out where to go. And our guests were really struggling to navigate the tipped-over cone, so thanks to staff for straightening it all back up. Council comments?
I had a question for Kate.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Kate, the best way, trash service, in the fall, or the winter, they suspended yard waste pickup. Do we know when that was?
It started last week. So anytime that you're having your collection date, if you're, whichever day of the week, you can put your yard waste bin out. Just know that your recycle bin is the one that, that alternates. And so if you also need bulk pickup, please call them in advance, so you can put your stuff out in the parkway to be collected. Collection day is always going to be Wednesdays for bulk pickup.
Okay, thanks.
Like, anything else? If not, I'll start, am I right? Mr. Reeser?
The only comment I have is really a request that the city, in a very near future, maybe next city council, brings an update to the public on Overton and specifically Habitat. And they're missing the April 3rd deadline and where we're going to go from there, or at least the direction we want to head from there. Thanks.
No comments?
I was just wondering, after the boil water notice over the weekend, if there's any way we can look at the, how we get the word out to residents? I just was a little bit worried that, like, a huge part of it was in ward two. I'm not sure people even knew it was happening or when it was lifted. I just don't know if there's a better way.
Well, that's a good question. What we do have is, if you are signed up for our DPW updates, all of that goes out with Nixle. So you can text SHDPW to 888-777, and that will get you signed up for any DPW updates. So if there's an outage, you'll get those updates. If you have a boil water notice, or if it's lifted, you'll get those updates. If you're having construction on your street or a nearby street, it should let you know about those updates. It's a really good tool. It's similar to what, what we do with the, with the beaches, but it's another tool that we do use with Nixle. Additionally, we put that on our website when we had that come up. Usually, we put a little tickler, so the first thing that you see is that boil water notice. So we can always improve our communications that way. As for when that went down, it's really hard for us to actually go, go out and attach, like, door hangers to each property if it's so large. But those are the two main methods that we use. Also, when we do a press release, we also upload to our, the city's official Facebook page.
Okay.
So if those are places that people are checking, those are three places we always have their information.
Yeah, I was just a little worried about, especially older people who might not even have a cell phone or use it very often, and same with internet.
Yeah. I, I mean.
I know there's no perfect answer.
There's no perfect answer. And plus, when you have such a large, multiple-block area, it's just, it really does not, we just don't have the staff to go out and attach door hangers to each person's house. So if there's, if there's people who would like to know about better communication, I'm happy to work with them.
Okay, thank you.
I should just throw that in the waves there, just kind of every, every, twice a year, whatever, just to say, remember to get, sign up for alerts, because they, it is.
That's a great topic.
A bit overwhelming at times, because, you know, you're on vacation. You're like, oh, someone's power's out. But it's, at the same time, when you're in the know, you're, and you're, you can quickly figure out, as you know, what's going on. So just encourage people to, because it's very helpful. I mean, lots of communication. So, very good. Mr. Arnold?
No comments.